City Council Meeting, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic of the British Commons, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Can we begin with roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers, Seeley.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Oberon.
Here.
Musman.
Here.
Kerns.
Here.
Councilmember Seeley.
Oh, thank your honor, I make a motion, we approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting of January twenty eighth, twenty twenty five, and they be approved as published on February eighth, twenty twenty five, and approve the minutes of the regular committee of the whole meeting, and they be approved as published on February eleventh, twenty twenty five.
Second. We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the minutes? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers. Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Chief Jerian.
Mayor, City Council, Kevin Jerian, Police Chief, I am pleased to be here tonight, along with members of the Police Department, Fire Department, two family and friends and citizens are here tonight to recognize three outstanding police officers with promotions within the Police Department. I am pleased to announce the promotions of Brett Schwant to Lieutenant, Roger Schumacher to Sergeant, and Brennan Rowling to Corporal. If you guys would come up, please.
You're right.
Oh, alright. Never mind. Alright. We'll start with Brett. Brett Schwant. Brett has been with the Clinton Police Department for over eighteen years. Brett is here tonight supported by his wife Lauren and his family and friends. Brett earned a bachelor's degree in criminal justice from Ashford University, and will earn his bachelor's of science degree this spring. Brett has also attended the Senior Management Institute for Police at Boston University. During his career with the Clinton Police Department, he has participated in a variety of specialty fields. He's been a former field training officer, a crime scene technician, a clandestine lab officer, an honor guard member, an SRT team leader, a chemical munitions instructor, and a SCAT team supervisor. With Lieutenant Schwant's education, experience, and training, I am confident that he will make a great lieutenant for the Clinton Police Department. Lieutenant Schwant will be assigned to the Criminal Investigations Division under Captain Majaco. Mr. Mayor, would you sign, would you swear in, well, you moved on me, too.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brett Schwant.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Iowa.
Of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police lieutenant.
Of police lieutenant.
In the city of Clinton, Iowa.
In the city of Clinton, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law. Thank you, Mayor.
One more time.
A real Sam Brown belt. That's awesome.
I know.
It's not too cute. Good job, girls.
We're getting a picture.
Get a picture, get a picture.
Do you have other family?
Twenty.
Right in the middle, there you go, right in the middle. There you go.
Do you have anybody else?
I have my mom and dad.
Come on up, mom and dad.
How long a day did you go up there? Anybody else? Do you want to be up there?
No. That's where we draw the line. Do you really have a Corvette?
I have a hot real one.
Oh, there you go. Alright, Roger Schumacher. Roger has been with the Clinton Police Department for over nineteen years. He's here tonight supported by his wife Jacey, who was also with the Clinton Police Department, and his family and friends. Roger is a graduate of Clinton High School, earning an associate's from Mount St. Clair College, and a bachelor's degree in psychology from University of Iowa. During Roger's career with the Clinton Police Department, he has participated in a variety of specialty fields. He's been a former field training officer, a clandestine lab officer, assistant SRT team leader, a sniper on the SRT team, and also been a SCAT member. I am honored to promote Roger to the rank of Sergeant, and I am confident that he will make a great supervisor for the Clinton Police Department. Sergeant Schumacher will be assigned as a Sergeant to the SCAT team. Mr. Mayor, if you will. I'm ready.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Roger Schumacher.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Iowa.
Of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police sergeant.
Of police sergeant.
In the city of Clinton, Iowa.
In the city of Clinton, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
As now or hereafter required by law.
Why'd he pick you?
You wear a dark shirt.
This could be a test.
Harper, you gonna get up there? We're gonna picture Harper. That's what brothers are for. Thank you. And that's, oh, oh, sorry. Brennan. Brennan has been with the Clinton Police Department for almost ten years. He is here tonight supported by his wife Amanda and his family and friends. Brennan started his career in law enforcement with the Sebula, Sebula? That police department up north in Illinois, yeah. In twenty thirteen, after graduating from the Iowa Police Academy in twenty fourteen, he worked part-time for the Bellevue, Preston, and McCookerda. Police departments. He started full-time with the Loiza County Sheriff's Office in January of twenty fifteen. In May of twenty fifteen, he was hired with the Clinton Police Department, and his real career began. During Brennan's career with the Clinton Police Department, he has participated in a variety of specialty fields, assistant SRT team leader, K-9 handler with Roman. Is he here?
No, he's not.
Oh. Marine unit and an honor guard member. Brennan will be assigned to the Patrol Division for a while with his K-9 unit. I am honored to promote Brennan to the rank of Corporal, and again confident that he will be a great addition to the supervisory staff of the Clinton Police Department. Mr. Mayor?
We'll swear in Roman later.
Aye, state your name.
Aye, Brennan Rowling.
Do you solemnly swear?
Do you solemnly swear?
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
And the Constitution.
And the Constitution.
Of the State of Iowa.
Of the State of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Faithfully and impartially.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of police corporal.
Of police corporal.
In the city of Clinton, Iowa.
In the city of Clinton, Iowa.
As now or hereafter required by law.
I can't.
As now or.
Hereafter.
Hereafter.
Required by law.
Required by law.
We definitely beat the Fire Department on cuteness. That's right. Thank you, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, please join me in congratulating the promis one more time, please. Thank you.
Chief did a great job. Your plan was perfect.
I knew it.
Great job. Great job. What?
I think it was changed three times.
Hey, man. Sometimes you gotta think on the fly.
I think you guys should have all the kids. Hey, Chief, I think you should have all the kids come. I got white, I got white. Or they got their vests on.
Yeah, that's what we do.
Alright, moving on to public hearings. We'll convene a public hearing concerning the proposal, proposal sale of northerly twenty-five feet of sixteen oh four North Third Street to Christopher Smith for three hundred dollars. Have you heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? If you're online, star six will unmute you. Star, stop it. Alright. Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Kerns.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of the northerly twenty-five feet of sixteen oh four North Third Street to Christopher Smith for three hundred dollars. I move it be adopted as read.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
We'll convene a public hearing concerning the proposal, proposed sale of southerly twenty-five feet of sixteen oh four North Third Street to Daniel Ivory for three hundred dollars. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Alright, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Oberon.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of the southerly twenty-five feet of sixteen oh four North Third Street to Daniel Ivory for three hundred dollars. Move this resolution be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
We will convene a public hearing concerning the proposed sale of six one three Second Avenue South to Devon Bray for three thousand dollars. Have we heard anything in the clerk's office?
We have not, your honor.
Is there any citizens that are in the room or online that would like to address this public hearing? Any council members that would like to address the public hearing? Alright, hearing none, we will close the public hearing. Councilmember Musman.
Thank your honor, I have a resolution authorizing sale of six thirteen Second Avenue South to Devon Bray for three thousand. I move that it be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Alright, moving on to audience comment section. I have two yellow cards. Both of these items are on the committee of the whole. Would either of you like to come up and speak now, or do you want to wait until the item on the committee of the whole? Wait, Catherine? Your item is on, your item's on the committee of the whole. Do you want to speak now, or do you want to wait till the item comes up on that agenda? Wait up, okay, perfect. Is there any other citizens that would like to address the council at this time with anything that's not on the agenda? Alright, hearing none, we'll move on. Consent agenda, councilmember Davis.
Thank you, your honor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented on the attachment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion on the consent agenda?
I have a question.
Couple of terms.
Seven Q and R, those are both related to ADM, right, Matt?
Yeah, they're both for the RWF expansion.
Okay, and then the only other one would be seven G I'd like to pull.
Seven G?
Yes.
Okay. Anything else for consent agenda from the council? Alright, can we have a roll call vote on the balance of the consent agenda, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Seeley.
Thank your honor, I'll make a motion, we receive approval and place on file claims listings, I think it's supposed to be one and two.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the claims. Is there any discussion on the claims listings? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shemmers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Oberon.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kerns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kerns.
Thank your honor, I have a motion to approve the mayor's recommendation to Home Road Charter Review Commission. Would you like me to read the names?
Please.
Okay. These are all for a one-year term.
Actually, we need a second first.
Oh.
Because you made a motion. Alright, now we have a second. Go ahead, please read them.
Okay. These are all for one-year terms expiring two eleven twenty-six. We have Bill Mischevitz, John Iseman, Joseph Hoinkes, Sean Connell, Matthew Brish, Ryan Beanstra, Rich Phalen, David Vickers, Aaron George, and we chose to name two alternates in case there turned out to be an issue, which would be Don Hanson and Kenyon Clark.
Alright, thank you. I do want to say, we originally had thirty-two applications for the commission, which is way more than I expected, which is really good. We had twenty-three folks that we interviewed, because the code does say that we shall interview, so as a commission, we interviewed those folks, and went through that process. We, we had to get creative, we had to have a couple different timeframes. We did a couple of them on Microsoft Teams, so we tried to do everything we could to make it accommodating to those folks. So I want to thank all of them that came through here. Everybody, everybody did a really, really great job. Then I also want to thank the Advisory Appointments Committee for doing a lot of work on this, and going through this process, and kind of doing this for the first time. And we learned some things along the way. We had some help from Pat, our attorney, which was good. And I think we, we learned some stuff about the process for advisory appointments as well, that we're going to kind of refine to. So it was, it's kind of a learning experience as we went along there. And now we're ready to get this, this group rolling. So is there any other discussion on this item? Councilmember.
I have an issue, either say yes or no. The getting this list yesterday, I, I was busy all day yesterday and today, and I didn't really have a chance to go over this list in my mind. I'm, I'm thinking that I'd like to table this, so that I can go through this. And it's not that, you know, we have twenty-three very great individuals, believe me. I'm just, I'm, I'm a little apprehensive for me to vote on something that I don't have all the information in my head yet, just because I haven't had time to go through it, based on the Advisory Appointments Committee meeting minutes of the interviews.
Okay.
In relation to this. I don't know if anybody else has, you know, that kind of, it's not apprehension, it's not, that's, it's not that word. It's like, I'm uneasy not being able to settle it in my mind, because we did have twenty-three very good people to say. And I'm just, I'm apprehensive is like, too strong a word. It's just, I'm uneasy about voting for me to do that. I don't know if anybody else has. Yes, just, I'm looking at the list, they're all great people, but I'm not being, just seeing that list like an hour ago, you know, hour and a half ago is kind of rough for me individually.
I'll say, I'll make a motion to, to just table for, you know, to time certain of February, whatever it is, twenty-fifth, is that the next meeting day? Just to have some, you know, time to just kind of go through it, just.
I, I, you got me lost, Greg. You've never, you've never done this with any other.
Yeah, I know, I'm just, I just, I just didn't see it. I mean, you know, because it was so quick, and I haven't been, I haven't been, you know, going through it in my head.
Is there anybody on here that you're concerned about?
One particularly, yeah. I'm not going to bring it up.
Oh, okay.
I think the process was done a little bit different than other ones, too, Councilmember Seeley. This is not, this hasn't been a normal process compared to all of the other barging commissions.
The interview process and stuff. I mean, I.
There's been some standards set that are, I'm hoping that we're going to be consistent with from now on as well, but.
With.
Well, time will, time will tell.
Well, with what specifically?
Well, the term conflict of interest has become a big issue, and we got now in front of that term conflict of interest, a perceived conflict of interest. So utilizing that, there's a lot of perceived, perception of conflict of interest on when we utilize that, so.
I understood Pat's explanation. Do you want to explain it again, Pat?
The only conversation I remember was the one about, you know, if you had an elected official whose job could be impacted by a change in the, in the charter, I was concerned about that, and I mentioned that as a potential reason why somebody should probably not serve if, you know, for instance, it's going to affect directly a spouse or someone who, you know, say the council decides to go from seven to five elected officials and a different form of mayor council governance, that could affect one or more of us on this council. So I was concerned about that, that's what I remember.
Yeah, I remember that, too, yeah.
The interviews have been out there for a while.
No, I know, yeah, but not in light of, of having all the names.
Okay.
Then that's, that is what is sitting differently for me than something else in the past. You know, before, like when we did the Advisory Appointments Committee, we made that, and that was part of the minutes of that particular meeting. So we had, you know, at least a weekend to, oh, yeah, those are the people, that's good, okay. You know, and we just got these. And that, that's why it's not, it's not sitting with me. It's just, it's, maybe it's just because it's out of the ordinary for me.
It took me a little bit of time to deliberate, because there was a lot of.
And you know what?
A lot of interviews.
For you to have this decision, I, I truly appreciate and respect your decisions. It's just that, hey, we just got it yesterday. And I didn't have time to look it over, in my mind.
I would say the twenty-fifth is still prior to our next Advisory Appointments Commission meeting, if I'm not mistaken.
Uh, it's probably, is it the last Friday?
Yeah, so.
The twenty-eighth would be the next, yeah.
I mean, I don't understand it, but I'm okay with it, I guess.
Yeah, I guess that's what you need. You know, I, the elephant in the rule, room is, is a bunch of people have a wild imagination out of what's going to come out of this. And I frankly don't think much of anything is really going to end up changing, but we've got, we've got some very differing opinions on this. So, you know, it's too bad to me because I think this is something that's neat. I think it's, it's a good thing. We've never done it. Most cities do it every ten years, so we're way behind the ball. And it's already turned into a controversial, kind of crappy process to begin with. So that's what, I'll be honest with you, it's disappointing to me. I frankly will approve this list, and if you need to make a modification because there's one person you're concerned about on here, we can certainly talk about that. But honestly, we're not talking about that individual person, removing them, and adding another one in a public setting.
Yeah.
And I don't, and I don't want to do that.
Well, that's what's got to happen if we change this list.
Well, it'll be known who your person is anyway.
Exactly, that's my point.
Because they won't be on here next time.
So.
But certainly if we, if we got this list earlier, and this isn't just for this thing, when we get these last-minute additions and amendments to the agenda, generally, that twenty-four hours ahead of time has always set weird for me.
Yeah, I agree.
You know, you know, I'd like to see, if, if we're going to change something, that's fine, I understand that, but, you know, let's not do it the Monday before Tuesday's meeting. I mean, then that's, maybe that's more what's sitting bad with me, because I haven't had time to ask my questions about the, the list. And, oh, that's fine, I'm, I'm fine with that, obviously, because I'm getting things explained to me by that.
Well, what questions do you have, I guess?
I'm, I'm not going to bring it up in public forum, because I don't, I don't think it's appropriate.
Who do you need to talk to?
Yeah.
Who do you need to have conversation with, the Advisory Appointment Committee?
Yeah, I, I got a point of order. It's, who's running the show here? Is it you, or is it him?
Well, him and I are having some dialogue right now, so.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm wondering, are you running the show?
No, I'm asking who is.
I'm trying to converse with Greg. Okay. No, I was just curious who, if you need to talk to the Advisory Appointment Committee, or, or what needed to happen exactly.
To make this simple, I mean, we still have the vote here at the end of the day.
Yeah.
We still have the vote here.
Correct.
So that, that will, you know, I'm going to withdraw my motion.
Well, I don't, I'm okay with delaying this. I'm just trying to understand what, what, and what conversations needed. That's all I'm trying to understand, Greg.
And I, and I don't want to do it in public.
I'll support your, your motion, I just was trying to get it. I'll support your, your motion, I just was trying to get it.
If you want to postpone it, that's fine. Again, I'm not going to, it's not going to bother me. So if that's what you want to do, that's.
No, I wasn't, I was just trying to understand.
And I'd be, and I'm willing to have whatever conversation with you that we need.
Yes, and, and maybe that's, you know, if we had the time to do it, this would be a mute point.
Because at the end of the day, we had, the five advisory folks made their recommendation to me, and then this is the list that I compiled from those recommendations.
And certainly I respect what you did, I do, you know. It's just that it was, it was done yesterday instead of like maybe Friday. And then I could have, hey, I had this question about this, explain to me. Oh, okay, I got it. I, you know, that's what, maybe that's what's sitting with me.
So you want to keep your table?
If we can, if everybody's okay going to February twenty-fifth, I would like to, you know, keep the motion intact.
All right, so we have a motion to postpone this to the date certain of February twenty-fifth.
Yes.
Correct? And now we have a second from Councilmember Davis?
Yes.
Okay. Any discussion on that motion? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, moving on. Councilmember Obrin.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution authorizing the commencement of work by HDR Engineering, Inc. on the Clinton RWRF renewable gas project. Move that, does resolution be adopted as presented?
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on this.
Yeah, Matt, and your email was good. So this is just ten thousand to?
Two parts, two parts.
Just, okay, go ahead, two parts.
So two parts. I sent you guys a notice on this today to be able to review, so there's two different pieces. I'll address A first. So for the biogas project, we need to get a design done to then figure out what that price is, because it can fluctuate between twenty and twenty-five million based on what equipment you get.
Is that this part?
This is the part A. Yep. And so this, we originally came to you guys, I think Councilmember Sealy actually said, hey, let's hold this until we get a contract codified with ADM. We have since then said, before we can get to that point, we need to get these, these pieces and parts together, because we may team with them still or we may not, but we want to, we can't go to the next step until we actually have what the equipment be and what the cost will be. So we're asking, and this cost will be covered, once we move forward, whichever course of action we do, by the SRF loan that will cover this. So this, this will not be unpaid bill for this.
So what will this ten thousand get in our?
Okay, they said ten thousand. So the, ten thousand is for Project Circle.
Okay.
So we're hoping that he can do it for less, less money, but basically, this will get us a design with an estimated cost with, like, by-line item of the equipment, so then that is what we can share with the SRF people to see what will the principal and interest be for that SRF loan.
Okay, so this is, this is going to be less than ten thousand.
Well, but we're then going to add in Project Circle for another project at a rail park that they're interested in us building up some stuff at the RWF so they don't do pre-treat, because their pre-treat cost is up here. We think we can come here, but we need to get the design done for that and what the cost is for that.
Okay, so this is going to give us that information?
Yes.
Okay.
And both, and both these things are paid for now. The first one's paid for by when we do the project. The second one is if Project Circle comes, but I think this is worth the dollars to spend from the RWF to figure this out, because even if Project Circle doesn't come, we have it for future ones that want to be able to have higher-strength phosphorus and higher-content BOD.
Yep. So this is not committing us to anything. This is just giving us the information.
Yes.
We need to decide how or if we can move forward.
Exactly.
How long will it take them to do this?
Um, I'm, I'm, I'll probably push the pedal down, is like, I need them sooner or later. Because one of the issues on the part A on this is, the longer we wait, the more we're going to burn a flame.
Okay.
Because once ADM is operational, their flow is coming to us in October of this year, we'll probably have a twelve-month period where we're burning a flare, but that's the methane. So every day we wait, we're slowing it down, but I think we need to get this part done correctly. So I would say, within the next month or less, we would get this information, then we would be able to get what the principal and interest would be for an SRF loan, and then that's when I'll come back to you all to decide what is our next steps as we move forward. Because regardless of the next steps, the rate will be tied to the biogas expansion. So the rate, like we did similar to the RWF two expansion, we tied a rate to it. So this will be an industrial user rate that has to be tied to it, that will cover the loan and the operations and maintenance of the biogas, because that means that then that's for sure, those are always paid for. And then I'll talk to you guys about federal tax credit, renewable identification numbers, renewable natural gas, all that stuff I'll include in the discussions as well, once we get this data back.
Okay, and this is coming out of the RWF?
Yes, yep.
So it says not to exceed ten grand, so what are you actually thinking? Did they tell you?
Oh, Dave, we're going to have Dave Hauken do it, so yes, it'll not exceed that. I don't know if it's going to be like nine thousand seven hundred and twenty-five, but. But he does really good quality work. He helped design the expansion that we currently, yes.
And has he, has he worked on other, other?
Many, yes. And so one of the things where we had to address this now is because they have a term at his office called, they can't work at risk, meaning they're not under a contract.
Oh, okay.
And he's been helping us, because we've been slowly inching our way, and he's been helping us, but he needs to have something to cover him for being able to put those hours in.
Okay. So we'll have information coming forward from him?
And I think it'll probably be quicker than a month, but I'm just going to give him some room, just in case.
Okay.
Because we've been looking at the type of equipment for a while. We just haven't finalized on what that will be.
And he's been helping you with that?
Yes, yes.
Okay, all right.
Councilmember Warren.
In the Project Circle, this is just for their part of that.
So this is.
For two parts.
It's completely separate, but what we want, what we're asking him to do is look at Project Circle, because they also have high content of phosphorus and BOD, like I mentioned. And not to get into the weeds, but this would basically, we have a fourteen-inch and an eighteen-inch force main that's at the rail park, so we'd have to upgrade the pump station, right? And then we most likely bring it to a lagoon and then feed it into the industrial waste site, not the residential, and it could actually be put towards biogas. Now, that's like four hundred and fifty thousand gallons per day versus eight million gallons, but every little bit helps, and we want to see how that would work, because we would end up having Project Circle pay for that, so they don't have to pay for their, their own pre-treat, which is a lot more money to do, and it takes up more space in the rail park for doing that versus just sending us that wastewater, then getting it to the plant, holding it in area, then getting into the process of the industrial site.
So do we have to do something to make sure that the water temperature in that area doesn't go too warm?
Yeah.
Isn't there something that ADM's got to do now with that?
Or vice versa, too cold. So.
Oh, okay.
On the plan expansion, we've been discussing adding in, do we need to have some heating elements down at the old wastewater, because it's about seven miles, give or take, pipe going from ADM to us, and we've been discussing, because right now what we're going to do is it's going to be heated on-site, but we've been having conversations, should we heat it? How much heat loss is in the pipes before it gets to get heated again? Because it's got to be around ninety degrees in the temperature to get it into the digesters, and then have the bugs do their thing, and that's what creates the methane, because you've got to have the heated wastewater with the sludge to then make the methane grow. So we'll look at that too, though. We think coming from the rail park, though, the heating won't be as valuable, because we're just going to get it to the lagoon. And then once it's on the plant site, then we can get it where it needs to go for heating or whatever. But very good question. You never thought you'd be talking about heating wastewater? Nor did I.
All right, any other questions or discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I have a resolution fixing, excuse me, fixing a date for a meeting on the authorization of a loan and disbursement agreement and the issuance of not to exceed two million five hundred dollars general obligation capital loan notes of the City of Clinton, State of Iowa, and providing for publication of notice thereof. I move that to be adopted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second discussion on this. Go ahead, sir.
So I also sent you a note on this. So when the State of Iowa is audited by, I believe, the federal government, because this is for state revolving funds, which are for water and wastewater projects, they went through and they started looking at basically the debt ratio for cities that have SRF loans. And the covenant, it's called LDA, the covenant's supposed to be at one point one zero, so it means you have one hundred and ten percent of required rates or on-hand cash to be able to pay your notes. When they looked at ours, ours had dropped to like point six five, it came up back to point nine five, it was at point nine eight. And one of the things that we identified and went through this process is, and the other cities had the same issue, is if you're not taking a new SRF loan, no one's looking at that ratio. So we talked about, with Aaron Smith from IFA, to have a new TTP, Technique Tactics Procedure, every year you look at it, because otherwise you could literally go five or six years and never know. So what that means is, we want to take that SRF loan note and refund it, and then take out a geo bond, because it takes it out of that area where we're looking at the cash ratio and the debt ratio of that SRF. It'll become a general purpose or general obligation bond. In doing so, we can't borrow for this year, so we'd come up with cash for five ninety-one K to pay that, and then the next three years we'd pay that off. That gets us to a one point one two debt ratio, and then once this October, when ADM is online, it jumps to one point nine, so almost two hundred percent. And then we even out about one point three three for the next, probably till, probably until at least the next twenty years, but the PFM forecasted out for the next, FY thirty for that. So the alternate in this, if you don't have the cash, is you need to raise rates. So we've always been on that same set. We don't see, as you guys, we don't want to do that, and so we thought this would be a better way, because when the revenue starts to flow on the other side, we can pay this back. We're just, I think I'll use Anita's quote, we're like on the cusp of a lot of stuff that's coming, we're just not quite there. But this is, was approved by IFA in concept, because I made sure that I could actually sign that note that I sent to them and do that, but approved, because otherwise they would stop reimbursing our current project. So this is the solution we came up for you guys to digest and talk about, and see if you would be so inclined to approve this, to move forward and get us to a one point one two debt ratio for our SRF notes.
So this two point five is on a three-year bond?
Yes.
So you're going to have it paid off? We're going to have it paid in three years.
Yeah, that's the plan. Right. Anita, are we doing a three-year on the bond or?
Yeah.
Yeah, three years, because we're going to do, the first year is, we have to pay for this year, because we can't bond for this year, because it's already over, and then we'll make, we'll make the payments over the next three years.
What are, what are we going to make those payments out of?
That'll come out of the super fund.
Is it, I mean, it has the capacity to make those payments?
We could levy for it on our debt service levy. We can talk about that once it's, you know, once it's set up.
What we talked about is having in on the levy, but then coming back and maybe it would be not the first, second, or third year, but as the revenue starts to increase at the wastewater plant, is then come back and put some more towards the debt service levy on other things, to then lower that, what we borrowed for that three years.
So the first payment is five hundred and ninety-one K?
Yes, sir.
And then the next three payments are?
Around six hundred and thirty, which is ironic, it's about the same cost that we owe to the county.
Six thirty?
Yeah.
It's going to change our rate quite a bit. Is that SRF at one percent?
Seven five.
One point seven five.
Plus a point two five percent servicing fee, so it's more like two percent.
Two percent?
Yeah.
So we're probably going to double the rate on it?
I don't know what, I don't know what IFA's rate is on a geo note.
Yep, that's where we're going to have.
IFA's?
Yes.
IFA's given us the loan?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so we're not going out for bond like we're.
No, 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 no. This is a refund, and they're going to transition this to.
It's just a note from the finance authority.
Yes.
Okay. So our, but our RWF does not have the capacity to make these payments right now, does it?
Not right now, but they might next year, after we have flow coming in from the large industrial customers.
Councilmember Warren.
In the big, in the bigger picture, we're looking at this IFA loan, and, correct me if I'm wrong, that them doing this is showing their support of what we're doing.
Yeah, and it's.
In a big way.
Yes, and it gets us to one point one two, and the bigger thing is, it doesn't make us raise rates, and it allows us to continue to get reimbursed for the one hundred and thirty million dollar project that we're currently doing.
Yeah, I mean.
Because that gets, that got frozen for about three days.
Yeah.
And we were, you know, we were frozen.
But, but it's like, it's like, you know, they have extreme confidence by doing this for us.
Yes.
In what, in what we're trying to do.
And one of the comments that Aaron Smith made was, he talked to Debbie before he actually called us, and, you know, and Debbie completely understands that we have a lot of economic development things that are coming along line.
Yeah.
To include the industrial side of the waste, and, but, once again, they, this is what they have to do, because they got federal dollars on this covenant. You know, they did tell us too, that we're the second highest loner or loanee for the state behind Des Moines, but that's because we're doing a very big project, and, but this will help across the board, because now we're seeing other businesses come to the rail park that might not come, because we can actually handle a different type of waste, so.
There's, is there any other options?
Cash.
Raise rates.
Raise rates. It's raise rates, cash, or do this refund of the SRF loan and make it a general obligation bond.
Okay.
What would the, what would the rate increase have to be?
Well, there's two options that they gave us. Do you want me to say it out loud?
Kind of, yeah.
Okay, well, one was twelve dollars and twenty-two cents from nine sixty-three.
So twelve twenties, yeah. Okay. What was the other option?
Uh.
It was ten something, but it was a combination of multiple.
Yeah, we had to do other borrowing.
Of other borrowing.
Okay.
Yeah.
That seems, seems complicated.
And Anita kind of ran the numbers on what it'd be, and we weren't comfortable with even sharing that with you, but.
This, this loan.
Yeah.
Because it's through IFA, we can pay it off as fast as we want?
Well, we plan to do it in three years.
Or is it similar, or is it similar to a bond like we normally do, where it's set for that time?
But we're only, it's like for three years. It's not a ten-year or fifteen-year.
I know that, but like if we sell ground to MG or something, and we decide that we want to take care of that, you know, or something like that happens, or another project comes, we can pay it faster on this one?
So there's.
I'm not a hundred percent sure about that, but you can put the money aside and use it for that.
And just hold it and get some interest.
Because it would depend on what their interest rate is too.
True.
If their interest rate is high, you might.
We'll, we'll double check, but I thought, and I'm probably wrong in this, but I thought Suzanne said like three seven five, but I could be wrong in that. We'll double check. On the interest rate for IFA, for us? She might have, I think she said that, but also maybe four point two, four something, four point two five?
Ooh.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, when will we know that? Next meeting? The interest rate?
Well, we can probably find out tomorrow.
Well, this is fixing the date for the next meeting, so.
This is just.
We would know before it's.
Yeah, we'll know before that.
Final approval.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, any other discussion on this? So obviously this vote is just fixing a date for the meeting. It's not approving the, the item here. Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Schumers. Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, thank you, Your Honor. I make a motion to, I'm sorry, a resolution approving the final plat of Clinton Townhomes subdivision. I move that to be accepted as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? They are plugging away on those.
Yes, sir.
They are.
That's good.
So I don't know if you, I know Councilmember Sealy heard the planning commission, but just kind of like a, so when we had this, if you remember, when we had all those buildings, they were individual plats, and we just made the decision at the time, let's hold until they get further along, so then they can combine these four parcels into one parcel, because then they also have to, it's, they're townhouses, so it's different, because the people are actually buying them. So based on how the townhouse ends up, they may end up having, they may end up having four parcels that look different than this, because the end ones are going to have a little more room than the middle ones, and so they, that's, they're, I think, I don't know if you caught that or not, Councilmember Sealy.
I thought they were doing condo.
Townhouses.
But it's a condo form of ownership, I thought it said. Yeah, it did.
Yeah, but don't they own the ground?
No, not a condo. Association owns it, so you have an undivided interest.
So it doesn't really matter, so maybe they had to do it one flat.
No, it won't matter, so this will work for what they need. See, where you see lot nine and ten, that's, I believe, the old, so that's all one common site, and it, those lines are just depicting where unit one, two, three, and four will be. So they'll pay like an association fee, they'll have to establish something. That's what I gathered was going on from what I read. So that'll work for what they're doing, given the size of the lots, yeah, or this, you know.
And you'll see too, not to digress from this too much, but you'll see this spring, early summer, there'll be a concrete alleyway that gets put in here, part of our development agreement with them, down to the corner. I actually talked to Dan Keith, he attended this meeting. We're going to talk about maybe getting about two feet of his area there to make it a twelve-foot alley to give a little more room for him and his big trucks and stuff to get around central siding. Yeah. And make, biggest one is making this corner, because Jason's design has this corner right here as concrete, because it just makes it easier to get around. You know there's a telephone pole, of course, that we'll have to fadinkle around, so.
Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, if they changed, but I, what I understood was the intention was to condo. Yeah, I, yeah, I mean, if they changed, but I, I, what I understood is the intention was to condo.
So it's all one plat?
Yeah, that's what I understood.
All right, any other discussion on this final plat? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Your Honor, I have a resolution setting the date for a public hearing on the proposal to convey interest in real property to Superate Logistics LLC. I move the resolution be adopted as read. Second.
We have a motion and a second? Matt, go ahead and kick this one off.
Sure. So this is the area, oriented here is Highway 30 here, airport up here. This is south 54th Street, I think Comanche calls it something different, 21st. This is the new road, if you get a chance to drive out on. And this is the 34 acres to lot, Super, uh, or Super Eight Logistics right here. It's not perfect because down in here, this is where the railroad track kind of bends around. So it's a kind of a mushroom on the, on the east side. But the intent is, he's going to create an area there for storage and transloading. You know, bringing semis in, offloading them, loading them up on trains and vice versa for that. His intent still is, on this document, is to work and get things pretty much in motion this year. But once again, we're going to be flexible because, you know, how things go with... But he wants to do it in phased approach to where he'd do like one building each year for the next couple of years for that. But no, we're excited. It's basically, you guys, I'd come back to you guys about the price. We did get it up to 2,900 per acre, if you're looking at the multiplication, 34...
29,000.
Or 29,000, what did I say? 2,900? Bargain, Pete would be happy, but 29,000, 29,000 per acre for $1,000,110 sale. And we think we, talking with dollars, we think we should be able to close by the end of April is the goal. But this is setting the public hearing for it.
And is that money, those funds going to go directly towards our payments or what are we doing? Have we decided?
We, I think Anita and I spent it three times so far, but no, I think what we'll do is we'll put it in the bank. We have, I think, the first piece we earmarked was the county payment. And then we had some third, third-party, third-party switcher, drop, push, pull, possibly use some of that. Or maybe for part of the payment for the new GO bond for, that we just talked about. But it'll be a good problem to have and we'll make sure we come back to you guys on, hit the finance committee and say, what's the best way forward for those expenses?
Sounds good. Any other discussion on this? Another great thing happened in the rail park? Good win here. Yep. All right, can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Musman.
Okay, let's see if I can do this right. Okay, move the council considering ordinance for the second time.
Please read the title.
An ordinance, the second and third consideration and adopt. An ordinance providing for the vacation of the north-south alley adjacent to lots nine and 11-14 and blocks eight range, three buoys addition to lions.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Move, move the council waive the two-prayer reading requirement of Iowa Code, Iowa Code Section 380.3 and place the ordinance on its final passage for adoption.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to waive the two-prayer reading requirement of Iowa Code Section 380.3 and place this on its final passage. That requires a three-quarter vote of the council. Can we please have roll call on that motion?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
All right, motion passes to waive the two-prayer reading requirement of Iowa Code Section 380.3. So we have the original motion and second for this ordinance and its final passage. Is there any discussion on the ordinance? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Shummers.
Your Honor, I have an ordinance for a second consideration.
Please read the title.
An ordinance amending City Code Chapters 32.121, City Organizations, Commissions and Committees, 53.10, Stormwater Detention Regulations, 115.05, Massage Therapy Business Permits, 159.021, PUD Planned Unit Development Overlay District, 159.027, SP Special Purpose Commercial and Historical Overlay Districts, 159.046 Supplemental Regulations, 159.052 Amendments, and 159.054 Zoning Permits and Inspections to Update References to Community Development. Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any discussion on this? Can we have roll call, please?
Councilmember Shummers.
Yes.
Seeley.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Obrin.
Yes.
Musman.
Yes.
Kearns.
Yes.
Councilmember Kearns, 7G.
Thank you, Your Honor. So this is for the CCDA grant for the walking trail around Eagle Point Park. My question is, it's a CCDA grant of, I believe, 156,000. And it allows for a project match funding up to 75,000 with a 25% project match by the owner. Have we already, have we already accounted for that money? Is it already set aside?
Yeah, so currently he has $75,000. I gave him the go-ahead to put 81 because you've got to have a 25% match. And if they do approve it, we'll come back to you to figure out the other 6,000.
Okay.
That was on a, on a CIP list, right?
Yep.
Yeah.
Yep. And this is for the, at Eagle Point Park on the northern side, basically where the car track is, to have a path inside there for folks to walk and do that. But I told Josh, I think it's worth it because we don't have another current CCDA, so let's get this in.